Thank you. Dr. Walkley, would you like to introduce our work?
I would. I'm very pleased to introduce Eric Wright. It's JB Forrestal's night to do their presentation. And I see there's some special guests with Mr. Wright, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Walkley and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to present some of the wonderful things that are happening here at JBF. But before I begin, but before I begin, I would like to say that we are proud to have taken second place at this year's Spirit of Beacon Day in the Flows category. We thought about demanding a recount, but we decided to let South Avenue enjoy the first-place trophy. Basically, it is on loan. Our families did a wonderful job and have done a wonderful job over the course of the past two years in preparing our flows. So, thank you. This year, we have been working hard to increase school spirit. One way that we have done so is with our discipline committee. Last year, we, through some of the meetings from our PT SO, they felt that we need to recognize students for doing positive things more in the school building. So, our discipline committee got together and decided to have a Student of the Month award ceremony. And proud to say that for the month of September, we had an award ceremony that went very well. We had over 65 awards given out. We had one for each classroom teacher, one that each classroom teacher gave out to a student who performed extremely well in the classroom. And then our special area teachers also gave an award. And then what you see here is our parents and our staff working together to create a board that is dedicated to our Student of the Month awardees. It's located right in the main corridor once you enter the building. And it was received well by all of our students and staff. Students were happy to see their faces on the board. And, you know, and students were also happy to see their classmates on the board as well. And we have more students that are looking forward in the future to getting their face and name up on the board. Tonight, you will hear from some of the organizations that have made a big impact in our school by bringing science to life for all of our students. You will hear from the Green Team. One of our teachers, our fourth-grade teacher, Leslie Tompkins, will present on the Green Team and the impact it has made for our fourth-grade students and for the teachers as well in bringing the science to life. Mrs. Tompkins is also instrumental in putting this presentation, slideshow together for me, so thank you. And then you'll also hear from Hudson Valley Seed and Common Ground Farm, whom together make up the Beacon Farm to School Collaborative. It started as three organizations that came together to support Beacon City School District, but at this point, it's just Common Ground Farm and Hudson Valley Seed. And basically, they work in all of the buildings throughout the district. We have Hudson Valley Seed that's been allocated to classrooms across the district. And we have Common Ground Farm, which is really housed so far at our school. You know, JBF is the first school within the district to put the entire pilot, to have the entire pilot. And it's really gone well over the past two years. We have the chef visits where recipes involving the vegetable of the month are prepared. We have a monthly taste test in our cafeteria where students get to vote on whether or not they enjoyed the vegetable of the month. Farm visits for each class in the building from kindergarten to fifth grade. And then we also have garden visits which take place. Now, Hudson Valley Seed has a garden component, which is a weekly garden component which takes place for all the K-2 classrooms. And then there's the Common Ground Farm or the Beacon Farm School Collaborative Farming, a garden visit, which is a visit that takes place once a semester. And you'll see some of the pictures throughout the slideshow to see the fun, but also the learning that has taken place with our students so far this year. But at this point in time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ava Bynum from Hudson Valley Seed and Simba Wyman from Common Ground Farm so that they can give you more information about their organizations.
Thank you for having us to present and share some of the work we've been doing. This is the second year of the Beacon Farm to School Collaborative, which is a partnership between Common Ground Farm and Hudson Valley Seed. And the idea is to get kids exposed to new vegetables and give them experiences that make them excited to try new vegetables and then give them tools to be able to keep eating those new foods as they go home and continue the rest of their day. Through this program, every K-5 student in JB Forrestal gets a garden visit. They get one in the fall and one in the spring.
Pre-K.
In pre-K. And they're doing things around the vegetable of the month. So, October's vegetable of the month was carrots, and students were making carrot art. They were harvesting carrots. They were tasting carrots. They did the same thing in September with zucchini. These are some students harvesting patty pan squash from the JB Forrestal school garden. And one thing that's been shown over and over again is that when you have students who actually are interacting with vegetables and actually participating in the process of growing vegetables and harvesting vegetables, they become really excited to try them. These are students learning about dirt. And another component of the program is with Common Ground Farm.
So, we have found that it's very exciting and transformative even for children to actually go to a farm and pull vegetables out of the earth and then, in the same, within the same couple of hours, prepare a dish with a chef from the vegetables that they actually pulled out of the ground themselves. They're thrilled to see animals, and it's important for them to make connections between the animals that they see in the barn and the food that they eat from the grocery store in the cafeteria. And at the farm, we're able to give them all of these experiences. Common Ground Farm, if you don't know us, is a nonprofit farm project that grows food for education and food justice programs. We serve our community as an educational model for people of all ages to learn how foods grow, how to raise ecologically sound crops without chemical fertilizers, herbicides, or pesticides, and how to keep farmland healthy for generations to come. We're a complete nonprofit. We, our missions are education and to get food, good food, to our community, which is beacon, pretty much beacon. So, this year, every class K-5 at JB Forrestal visits Common Ground Farm for a half-day field trip. We're tailoring to connect to the curriculum of each grade. And visits so far have included a close-up study of worms, other garden helpers, a visit with our resident beekeeper, a tour of the field, a visit with the barn animals, and the experience of harvesting vegetables from the field and making a dish with them. So, here are some pictures from farm field trips. This is, these are carrots that the kids harvested themselves, and now they're making a carrot slaw and a candied carrot dish with Chef Katie. And then the third component of our program, after the garden visit, or all the children in the fall and spring have a garden visit, then they either have a visit in the fall or spring to the farm. And the third component, which is happening in the winter months this year, is the chef-in-the-classroom visit, where every class at JB Forrestal, pre-K to 5, gets to prepare and cook a dish together using the monthly vegetable with a professional chef. Pre-K cannot visit the farm, so our farmer goes to the classroom and provides the same farm experience as much as possible to the pre-kindergarten classes. So, every month, we have a different vegetable. And throughout the year, all the students receive different aspects of the program. But every month, the last Thursday of every month, that all the students in all four elementary schools participate in a taste test. So, we're working together with Karen Pagano. This year, she is developing the dish herself, and we are helping to promote and encourage students to vote. And if they like, if they vote, try the vegetable and taste it themselves, they get a sticker. So that we hope that they continue to, are being encouraged to try new vegetables each month with their taste tests. And hopefully, as you can see, more kids like the carrots than didn't.
So, that's the program that happens just at JB Forrestal, and it's the collaborative program. There's a separate program that's also run by Hudson Valley Seed, which is part of the collaborative, which is a program that happens every single week with every K-2 class in the Beacon City School District. And through that program, we're sending in educators to teach students about healthy eating and curriculum-aligned academics outside in school gardens. So, we have a pretty small staff, and we're based out of Beacon. And we work in total with 1,576 students every week, and that's across Putnam, Duchess, and Orange Counties. And we've felt a lot of growing support this year especially, since this is our official third year in Beacon, from parents and businesses and community members. So, right now, in Beacon, we work in all four elementary schools. We work with every kindergarten, first, and second-grade class every week of the school year. And in Beacon, that's 756 students every week. Basically, the program is giving students an opportunity to test out what they're learning in math class, or science class, or reading, or writing, and give them a chance to use those skills out in the school garden. And it gets to be a hands-on experience. They get to get their hands dirty. They get to try new foods while they're doing it. And the program expands by one grade per year. And the things that I always stress to school officials are that it's really not more work for teachers. We really send in a prepared educator to co-teach with the classroom teacher. And also that it really is Common Core-aligned so that students can be achieving academically while they're having this outside enrichment experience. So, at JB Forrestal, this is our third year. We started in spring 2012 with Mrs. Lucido's kindergarten class. And then last year, Mrs. Joyce participated with her first-grade class for the entire year. And this is the first year we're finally in every K-2 class in JB Forrestal. And the program is designed to expand by one grade per year, so our hope is that next year will be K-3. We just had a parent work day. And the garden, which started as just a kindergarten garden and then moved to a bigger garden out front, and now is an even bigger garden out front, had a lot of help from some young gardeners moving soil around. We do a lot of things in garden time. We do a lot of drawings. So, on the first day of garden time, we ask students to draw a picture of what they think a garden is. And we said there are no wrong answers, and we collected quotes from students so that we can ask them the same question at the end of the school year. We also do a lot of weekly observation. Those are garden journal entries about mizuna and lettuce. And every student in the district has their own garden journal that they keep every week. I'd like to invite Mrs. Joyce up with some of her students who have been doing garden time to talk a little bit about their experience with the program. And while they're coming up here, I'll just say that Mrs. Joyce has been a real pioneer of this program and willing to try it out and sort of take the leap before other teachers were quite ready to. And it's been really exciting getting to work with her for two years now. And I'm just going to pass around to the board a garden journal that they all made.
Welcome, everyone. This, as Ava said, this is my second year working with Hudson Valley Seed. I love this garden project. She comes each week, and the kids know the day she's coming. They know when she's coming. If she doesn't come, they're sad, and, you know, but she comes every week. So, I really love to collaborate with her. We've taken it up another step, and we've been studying plants and trees and changes that happen in the fall. And it segues right into studying the harvest. I love that kids learn where food comes from rather than just prepackaged in the food store. We also study changes that happen in the autumn and why we're planting seeds. And it's really a wonderful program. The kids all get to taste new food. Last year, the first time we went outside, Ava was ripping off kale and handing it to all my first graders, and I'm thinking, they're never going to try this. And they all tried it, and they all liked it. And it was fantastic. It also segues into some of our ELA. In our, some of the ELA that we study is nutrition. And it's perfect because it's really giving them a good picture of what nutrition is and how vegetables and fruits fit in with the food pyramid and how it's important to actually eat those fruits and vegetables. And I want, the kids, if they want to say something, I would love them to tell what they are feeling about the garden. And they are allowed, they can say whatever they want. We're just unencouraged to whatever they want to say. So, if you'd like to tell us something, go ahead. Tell us a thing.
Well, probably the garden part one. And everything they're doing because they ate nuts and they got it. And that's what they said, I really liked the garden book.
What were some of the things that you ate?
Well, some lettuce, and some kale.
Why did you find out about carrots? Carrots are a root vegetable. And what was so special about those carrots that you had in our class one day? They're all different colors, right? There's four different colors that carrots grow in. I didn't know that. And we found that out, right? Do you want to say anything else, Alex? Would you like to say something?
No.
Shay was in charge of making the beautiful cover of our book. And everybody has, the entire class wrote their observations of what they've learned about the garden right now. And it is unedited. It is where they are in first grade. And we plan on making more garden books as the year goes by. And we'll use these in the classroom for reading time. And then by the end of the year, we'll dismantle them, and everybody will get to take all their pages home. But it was, you know, they've been learning so much about life cycles and how things work. And I'm really proud of them. They're doing a great job, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shay. Shay, the artist for the cover, was also the student of the month.
That's true. I want to talk a little bit about what this program costs. Hudson Valley is a nonprofit, and we're funded 60% by private donations and 30% by grants and foundations and 10% from in-kind donations from farms or corporate sponsors or things like that. So, right now, in Beacon, the full cost of the program is $120,224 for the year. In JB Forrestal, that number is $26,712. And we're figuring out how we're going to keep growing the program. Bringing on third grade next year would raise the program cost in the district to $160,272 and would raise the cost at JB Forrestal to $35,616. And what's exciting is that we have private donors in this community, and we have grant-making organizations, and we have businesses who want to support weekly garden education programs for students. One thing that I've been hearing from a lot of our supporters is that they want to see school buy-in. And we've felt so much buy-in from teachers like Mrs. Joyce, who are, you know, putting in the effort to make a program like this, everything that it can be, and make it rich and tie into the curriculum and keep working with students. And my hope is that possibly looking into next year, the Beacon City School District might be able to contribute part of the cost of this program. And that's it.
Hi there. I'm Leslie Tompkins. Mrs. Waggy and I teach fourth grade at JBF. And I've been working with Helena Bratman and Green Team for the last 10 years now. We just had our 10-year anniversary. So, Helena does a lot of stuff with us. And we've kind of changed our work through the years. We started out, you know, doing a worm compost bin. We did planting and harvesting as well. And we had like local food feasts. And it's wonderful because I can say to Helena, you know, let's try this, let's try that. And she'll say, okay, that's great. And it's a great opportunity to show the fourth graders that they can then become an actual Green Team. And what Green Team, they have small, local-run business that used to make salsa. I was kind of the salsa distributor of BCSD. We were able to get salsa. And now they have a student-owned business, or student-owned business of a mobile farmer's market that you might see around town, a little green van. Then we got on the topic of honeybees. And Helena invited in Ray the Beekeeper and his queen bee Ethel. And we were able to learn about honeybees and how essential they are with pollination. And it would tie it into our science curriculum. And the kids were fascinated when they found out about how honeybees are disappearing. So, we learned a lot about it. At first, we started doing PSAs up here. You'll see, this was probably 10 years ago. We were filming public service announcements, trying to educate people on how the honeybees are disappearing. Just land right there. Then we moved it to posters. And we created posters telling about the plight of the honeybees and how, you know, how essential they are to us. And then when Mrs. Waggy and I started teaching fourth grade together, we decided we really want to put some more writing into it. So, we have the students on the Awesome New Chrome books research about the honeybees. And then Helena works with them to create this mural where they draw honeybees. And you can kind of see how around the hive, there's tons of them. And then when you get to the end of the huge mural, they kind of dwindle out. So, it's like a visual of how the honeybees are disappearing. And then we put the essays around it as a huge display. This was, it's not the full one. But so, it goes all the way down from my classroom down to Mrs. Waggy's classroom down there with their essays around it, which is really great. But one of the coolest things about Green Team is here I have, here I have Randy Silva, who was my student like 10 years ago. And now, he is an actual Green Team. See, look, oh. So, you know, here it is 10 years later, and he's still excited about it. And he uses everything that he learned from fourth grade all the way on up. And then we have another one. She's not here today, but Anya. Anya, she was, she's my little bee. And here she is now. She's also 18 and a Green Team. So, it's just, it's wonderful that I've been able to keep Helena. I kind of refused to let her go. She started out in a lot of the schools and, you know, with funding and everything, but I just, I kind of won't let her go. We went from two semesters, now we're down to one semester. But it's just, it's just wonderful to be able to work with her and to be able to tie it into the literature and have the kids learn about science that's important to today, such as the honeybees disappearing. So, that is that. So, thank you for being here.
So, in closing, I would just like to say that a lot of times, science is forgotten about. It's a forgotten subject, you know, because ELA and math has taken the forefront. You know, the scores are what's posted statewide. And, but, you know, I'm excited to say that, you know, not only is the science curriculum being taught, you know, at JBF, but it's also alive. You know, science is alive. You got to see how, with the help of some of the organizations that are right here locally, how, you know, our students are getting these hands-on experiences that keep the science, it'll keep them forever learning. So, thank you for that. I would like to thank Ava Bynum and Simba Wyman for coming out this evening and showing their support. I would like to thank Mrs. Tompkins, once again, for her help with the presentation. I would like to thank our parents and staff for coming out this evening. I'm sure you're tired as well. And lastly, I would like to thank our students, our first graders, you know, for coming out, Mrs. Joyce and our first-grade class for coming out this evening. I know that, you know, they're excited that there's no school tomorrow, so it allows you to stay out a little longer. You know, it takes great courage to stand up here and to present like that, so thank you. And I think they deserve a round of applause. And if there are no questions, thanks again for having me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright and all your guests. We really appreciate the good work that's being done at JB Forrestal. We have a second presenter, Mr. Archer and Ms. Triasi, who are going to talk about a special plan that they did at Sargent School. So, I'll turn the meeting over to them.
Good evening. Sargent Elementary, because of our achievement scores in ELA and math across the grade levels, we had to put an improvement plan together. It's called, we call it, officially called the LAB. It stands for Local Assistance Plan. There should be a copy in your packets. Just want to take a few minutes to talk about some of the highlights, some of the work we're doing. And Ms. Triasi's going to finish off with just sort of some, some of the big ideas, so to speak. According to the LAB process, we had to form a team of stakeholders, which include some parents, teachers, myself, Ms. Triasi, Mr. Mohren, and a staff developer from the RSE task. His name is Bob Engel, and he's worked in some of the other schools as well. The first thing we had to do was survey the stakeholders. We had to survey kids, teachers, all faculty, and parents. The survey, we actually did two student surveys. A modified one for the K-2 kids and a longer one for the grades 3 through 5 students. And we learned quite a bit of information through those surveys. What we did learn was kids, parents, teachers feel very strong and positive about Sargent Elementary School. Some of the things they felt most strongly about is the family atmosphere. Some of the things they felt most strongly about is the family atmosphere in the building and the sense of community. And those are areas of strength that we're going to build on. Some of the areas that we do need to focus on from a big-picture standpoint are creating a vision and a mission statement, which is a work in progress right now. And some of the big areas that we do need to work on, and this came through the data, through the surveys, is we need to work on communicating what it is we want out of our teaching and from kids. And we are working on a school-wide book read. The book is called Explicit Direct Instruction, which I'm going to leave a copy for the school And some other areas that we do need to focus on are how we use data, what kind of decisions we make from using the data, and improving our partnerships with our parents. Those are all pretty big areas, and it's a big endeavor for us to undertake. It's an opportunity for us to take a look at ourselves and to, and I'll let Ms. Triasi finish up.
Really, I feel like I can't sit here and speak about the LAB without first commending Mr. Archer. Truly, working with him on this process has been great. I think when you have a LAB, which is a self-review, you can look at it two ways. You can say, oh, this is something I have to do for the state, and let's just go and finish and do it. Or you can look at it and say, you know, this is an opportunity. And that's what Mr. Archer has done, and the faculty as well, the other people on the LAB team. So it has been, I think, a great process, and Mr. Archer's leadership has been great because he's supporting it. So, like I said, he looked at this as an opportunity, and when we looked at the data, as he had mentioned, there were a lot of things that Sargent is doing very well. And it was almost like, oh, look at this, wow, wow, this is really great, this is really great. But of course, there's also always room for improvement. And it was somewhat uncomfortable at times to be looking with a critical eye at areas where you could be doing a little bit better. But again, it's an opportunity for us to improve. And there are a lot of things that we have already put into place. There's some things that, you know, on a timeline that will be put into place, and some things that have already put into place. And I've seen it, just walking through Sargent, I've seen it, talking to parents, talking to staff, and actually in my observations, I had seen, I didn't even know actually, that some of the explicit direct instruction had already started, and I was in doing observation. And I went and I talked to one of the related service providers, said, wow, you know what? We're going to be doing explicit direct instruction, and you're already doing some of it. She said, I know, it's from the book, it's great. You know, so she's already been doing it. So it's been very positive, and I think that we, it's going to be helpful for us going forward, looking at this performance data, using the book share, the discussions, to really help build capacity and improve instruction for all of our students moving forward. So I think it's going to be positive.
And thank you for giving us this opportunity to share some of the highlights, and we look forward to your support on that as well. When our building has our presentation, we'll give you more details on it, or I can answer questions if you like.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to hearing a little bit more about your work as you go along this year. It sounds very exciting. And thank you to the teachers, Mr. Archer, both Ms. Triasi, Mr. Mulhern, and the rest of the team that put together the program. So thank you.
May I have a motion for executive session?
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of the particular individual, and the board will return as soon as possible.